Good evening. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order May ninth, 2022, and the time is six oh one. And I would like to call on Commissioner Carver Hall to lead us in the presence of allegiance, please.
Vice Chair, stand over your heart. Ready begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to note that Commissioner Hernandez is present. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Definitely Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Rounds?
Here.
Vice Chair Carver Hall? Chair Jimenez?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, great. Seems like there was none. Moving on to public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item, on the agenda or not on the agenda, except for comments for public comment. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you'll have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present in the audience or otherwise on Zoom wishing to speak?
Very many, if you just give me a minute as I add me to a panelist.
Okay.
Wong, do you see anybody with a raised hand function?
Okay, seeing there's none, I would like to close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two of the Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion and a second for approval of minutes, please?
I'll move. A second.
Okay, great. Motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven. Public hearing continued from April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. A request to allow an existing development to deviate from section one five five point two six oh of the city zoning ordinance and provide a five-foot-wide landscape strip instead of the required twenty-foot width between the onsite parking area and the property line adjoining adjoining a major highway, which is Rosecrans Avenue, for the subject property located at one three nine four nine Stage Road. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number seven.
Item number seven, zone variance, case number, what? Yeah, case number ninety-three. Subject property is located at one three nine four nine Stage Row. The subject property is approximately two point eight five acre located between Rosecrans Avenue and Stage Row. The zoning for the current property is M two heavy manufacturing with a land use destination of industrial. Currently is occupied by Robinson Ready Mix as a concrete batching plan with an active conditional use permit three four three. So a little background, the subject property is part of the Rosecrans Markort Avenue Overpass Project initiated by LA Metro. As you can see from the site plan from the right side, the, after the project, the property will be reduced. And as a result, one thirteen thousand one hundred seventy-three, seventy-six square feet of the property will be converted as part of the overpass project. And the portion highlighted in yellow from the site plan on the bottom will be part of the overpass bridge. So after the acquisition, a overpass elevated bridge will be constructed along Rose, Rosecrans Avenue. The overpass will be highlighted in the yellow area, starting from a six-feet retaining wall, gradually increasing to a sixteen-feet retaining wall toward the west. Majority of the furniture along Rosecrans will be part of this elevated overpass. So according to our current zoning code, this subject property is required to provide a twenty-foot landscaping strip along Rosecrans Avenue. As a result of this acquisition, this existing landscaping strip will be eliminated, eliminated and reduced along with the parking and storage area for this property. So as a result, the applicant Sorry, sorry Commissioner. As a result, the applicant is requesting his own variance to reduce the required twenty-foot landscaping setback into a five-foot landscaping setback. So the highlighted green area will be the result with the five, the five-foot wide landscaping strip. And then the red area will be what was, will be, what was required as a twenty-foot landscaping strip. So as you can see, if the applicant is to provide the required landscaping strip, majority of the parking and the storage area will be reduced and eliminated. And that will hinder the operation of a concrete batching plan. So in addition to providing a five-foot landscaping strip, the applicant is providing a tan tree along Rosecrans Avenue as part of a screening for the parking and the storage area. As you can see from the elevation on the right side, the overpass is sixteen-foot in height even with the tree, they would need to wait for it to grow into mature tree in order for it to screen any type of the property. So for CQ review, staff is made a determination that the subject zone variant is exempt from CQ pursuant to section one five three oh five, class five A minor line, lot line adjustment, side yard and setback variance, not resulting in the creation of a new parcel. The public hearing was originally noticed on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two to five hundred feet radius property and was posted in the City Hall, Town Center Hall and Library. We did not receive any comment regarding this proposed zone variance. For finding the extraordinary condition applied to the subject property is the Rosecrans Markort Avenue Gray Separation Program that was initiated by LA Metro and was not initiated by the applicant. As a result of the project, thirteen thousand square feet of the land was acquired for the project and the existing compliance, existing landscaping strip will be removed. Granted, this variant would not allow, would allow the applicant to continue with the operation. And also, it would not be detrimental to the, to the surrounding properties since four other different property along Rosecrans Avenue does not meet the current twenty-foot setback, landscaping setback. Lastly, the sub, the land use destination will not change with the approval of this zone variance and the zoning will also not change. Staff recommend that to approve the proposed zone variant and the proposed zone variant is exempt from CQ and adopt resolution number two one zero dash twenty twenty-two, which incorporate the Planning Commission finding and action regarding this matter. And that conclude my presentation. I do have the applicant attending the Zoom meeting. If you have any question for the applicant, but I'll should be able to answer any question regarding this project.
Great, thank you Jimmy. Do any commissioners have any questions on this item?
No, I don't have any questions for the applicant, but just, you know, with the staff's report, kind of makes sense to, you know, you can't deem the property owner for something that the state's doing on the overpass and, and, and they're going to be looking at a wall, a sixteen-foot wall anyway. So anyway, no. Jimmy, thank you for the presentation.
Questions?
No questions on my part.
Okay, great. I would like to open the public hearing at six twelve. I would like to call upon the applicant. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function at this time. Do they wish to speak or?
I have Christine.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Planning Commission. I'm sorry.
Please state your name and the city of residence for the record.
Christine Guevarts, Corona, California.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank the Planning Commission and Jimmy. I have nothing to add. I think he did a beautiful job and he's been very helpful through the process. Thank you.
Great. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? No questions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function.
Chair, I see none.
Okay, great. I would like to close the public hearing at six thirteen. And could I get a motion and a second for this item? Motion by Commissioner Rounds and second by Commissioner Carver Hall. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carver Hall? Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes.
So ordered. Mr. Attorney, please.
Commission's actions on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant written notice of the commission's action. The applicant or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Item number eight, consent. Consent item. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted in one motion and a roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the Planning Commission. Item number AA is a planning consent item. We have one consent item unless the commissioners would like staff to present this item for further discussion. Could I get a motion and a second for approval?
Commissioner Carver Hall, I move consent agenda.
Commissioner Hernandez, I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Carver Hall, second by Commissioner Jimenez. And could I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds? Vice Chair Carver Hall? Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes four zero.
So ordered. Mr. Attorney, please. Oh, we don't need on that one. Okay. So item number nine, presentations. ADU study session. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number nine.
Commissioner, a little background before the presentation. So in two thousand twenty-one, the city of Santa Fe Springs was selected to be, to participate in the Sustainable Community Program that was created by Southern California Association of Government and the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So as part of program, we Woodson Associate was selected to be the consultant to develop tool for our residents related to ADU accessory dwelling unit. So today we have Woodson Associate Garland here to provide a presentation related to the program and what's the outcome and what will be provided to this resident as a result of this program.
Okay. Hello, I'm Garland Woodson, Principal of Woodson Associates, which is the prime of consultant team that is working with four separate cities under a grant from SCAG with funding from HCD under the Regional Early Action Program. And the intent of this grant is to provide technical assistance to facilitate the construction of accessory dwelling units. So tonight, I'd like to talk to you about a brief introduction to the project. Talk a little bit about local progress in Santa Fe Springs about constructing ADUs over the past few years. Present the results of demographic analysis. Talk a little bit about the, the policy lands, landscape and how it's been changing in California related to ADUs. And talk about some emerging best practices for regulating ADUs at the local level and then take questions and talk about next steps. So first off, the Santa Fe Springs ADU project. This is my, my team. Consulting team is made up of, in addition to myself. We have Florentine Christian from Sidekick Homes who may be joining us a little bit later this evening. She's stuck in traffic but is a local expert in the production of ADUs and also in AD regulations. Also on the team, we have Elizabeth Decker of Jet Planning, Robert Liberty, who has been involved with regulating and writing policy for ADUs since before ADUs were a thing and has worked for AARP as well. And oops, what happened to the rest of my team? I pressed my finger on it. Cole Peterson, who literally wrote the book on ADUs. Delwardston Associates, DRA is handling outreach and will be helping us put together a public outreach program for Santa Fe Springs later this summer. Suzanne Madison of Allegra is helping us with brand management, helping us to develop a ADU project brand for the city of Santa Fe Springs, which will include an ADU webpage, like a one-stop shop that people can go to on the city's website. That'll explain all, all things about ADU, including a hand owner's fact, fact book, fact sheet, an ADU calculator that tell you how much it talks to construct an ADU as well as other information that we produce out of the project. Finally, we have Joshua Abrams of Bayer and Driscoll Planning, which has been doing ADU planning across the state of California for a number of years. So some of the goals of this project are to produce an AD brochure, a handbook, a calculator, a fact sheet, a process check sheet checklist that'll tell an applicant all of the elements of the review process that they can expect when they come in and submit an application for an ADU and related tasks. Our project arc is a four-phase project. We're currently in the second phase of building readiness with three feedback loops to connect those four phases. And, and it is expected to wrap up at the end of this calendar year, although we might extend that if we need more time. So the city of Santa Fe Springs has gone from about zero approvals of ADUs prior to twenty seventeen to ten percent of all housing units approved in the city in twenty eighteen were ADUs. Eighty percent the next year were ADUs. A hundred percent of housing units approved in this city in twenty twenty were accessory dwelling units. And then in twenty twenty-one, the picture changed, even though the amount of ADUs approved did almost double from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. There were some large apartment complexes that also got approved in twenty-one. And so the percentage of ADUs shrank from twenty to twenty twenty-one, even as the number continued to rise. So the city of Santa Fe Springs has a little bit over eighteen thousand people with, in twenty twenty-one with twenty ADUs approved. That's about nine hundred and something people per approved ADU, which is, so I'm trying to communicate to you like the ADUs approved per capita. But what I'm doing is I'm inverting those two numbers because if it was per capita, it'd be like point zero zero something. So instead, I'm telling you the number of people per approved ADU. It's a smaller number for Los Angeles County that's being driven by the city of Los Angeles, which is going gangbusters right now in terms of approving ADUs and is dragging the, the whole per capita ADU production rate up for the whole county. So the, the rate here in Santa Fe Springs is about half that of the county as a whole, which again is being driven by the city of Los Angeles. At this level of production of ADUs, roughly seven percent of the homes in the city will have an ADU within twenty years at this rate of ADU production. And just for context, when we're doing long-range planning for a city or for a region, a good rule of thumb is that we might assume that between five and ten percent of all homes produced during a planning horizon in a city or a region might be ADUs. And so seven percent is right in that sweet spot of what we might expect to see in terms of ADU production levels for a city. However, if Santa Fe Springs were to increase its production level to ratch the mate, to, excuse me, match the rate of Los Angeles County as a whole, that would increase the rate, almost thirteen percent of all homes within twenty years. So let's shift into a demographic analysis. Right now, the city is about sixty-two percent single-family homes, which is a, a large part of the sweet spot for where we would expect to see ADUs built. However, recent state zoning legislations or state AD regulations that impact zoning have now opened up all residential properties to have ADUs, something I'll touch on a little bit. And so indeed, any place in the city, any of the, the types of housing units shown on this bar chart could potentially have an ADU constructed on the property. The city right now, seventy-six percent of the homes in the city were built prior to nineteen eighty, which indicates an aging housing stock. And one thing about an aging housing stock is that's a lot of homes that the owners might be looking for a remodel if they can afford it. And at that point in time is when the, the decision is most likely to be made of, do we add an ADU to this property? You know, is it going to be attached or is it maybe cheaper or more beneficial to make it a detached ADU? So that's part of the story of, of what these numbers are telling us is that seventy-six percent of the homes in the city might be looking at remodel and might be looking therefore at that ADU decision point. So that's a, that's a big chunk of the city. Right now, also seventy-six percent of the households in the city live in a two or three-bedroom home. And so one way to look at that number is they might be looking for room to grow if it's an extended family or if they want to bring on a tenant to add income. Sixty-two percent of the households in the city have one or two vehicles available. This is just a thing to keep in mind when thinking about parking and, and the potential impact of parking of adding another ADU or another dwelling in it to the property. Right now, majority of the households in the city live in a home that they own. The city is diverse, largely Hispanic. And the benefits of homeownership are almost proportionally distributed in Santa Fe Springs, except that black homeownership rates are significantly less than those for white households. And that's just comparing the makeup of the city versus the homeownership rates. Hispanic and black households are disproportionately slightly more likely to be renters than Asian and white households in the city. And over one in five households in the city are severely housing cost burden, paying over half their monthly income for housing. More households in the city are severely cost burden renters in comparison to severely cost burden owners. And here's a map of where that cost burden is. For owners, the cost burden tends to be in the northwest or west part of the city. I'm not sure. You could probably tell me that the name of that neighborhood. But for housing cost burden renters, they're concentrated kind of in the center of the city. Again, I'm not, I don't know what the neighborhood name is, but perhaps this is meaningful to you. Yeah, yeah.
That's the villages and it's some, that and the bottom on red area is actually a new complex that was just built on Carmenita. It's on the southeast end of Santa Fe Springs.
So these are almost specific housing developments.
I mean, they're all built with their last. The bottom one is actually just brand new. It's only been built about a year ago.
Wow, okay. Perhaps that's why it's, perhaps the rents are higher and that's why it's more of a housing cost burden than. Okay, thank you for the context. I appreciate that. The housing cost burden by race in the city is, is shown down here. Pacific Islanders tend to bear the, the biggest housing cost burden by race, whereas Asians and native peoples have, have the least cost burden. In terms of ability limits, and one of the reasons to look at this is whether people might want to have something like a zero-step entry to an ADU part of the, one of the things that this project will result in is a set of plans that could be pre-approved for ADUs that people could use to, to, to build ADUs in the city. And so one of the things the design team wanted to know is, do we need to plan for zero-step entry? How, you know, how much of the city might need that? And so about thirteen percent of the city has some sort of ambulatory limitation, meaning trouble walking. And so that means there's a, there's a small but not zero demand for zero-step entries at the very least, according to census data. And finally, at least fifty-four percent of the people in the city are under forty years of age. So it's a, a younger city in terms of the, the demographic distribution. Okay, now I'm going to switch to an overview of the current policy landscape in the state of California regarding accessory dwelling units. So the, the laws have been changing quite rapidly since twenty sixteen. And so rather than give you a blow-by-blow of how they changed, I'm just going to walk through the in-state of where we're at today. So ADUs must be approved ministerially rather than using a discretionary process based on objective standards that set the size, the configuration, the setback and the placement on the lot in a way that can be quantifiable. The minimum allowable maximum ADU height per ordinance that a city can set is no less than sixteen feet. So what this means is the city could allow for a higher ADU if the city wanted to. The city could allow for a thirty-two-foot tall, tall ADU, for instance. But it cannot restrict the height to less than sixteen feet. That's what minimum allowable maximum height means. So the state ordinances do not specify a maximum ADU height. They just say the minimum allowable is sixteen feet. The ordinance or the state statute also says that housing elements must include a plan to incentivize and promote the creation of ADUs that can offer affordable rents for very low, lower, moderate income households. And one of the tasks of this project is to look at potential financing options that might make ADU construction more accessible to folks with less means. State ordinances establish the maximum set of standards that local agencies shall use to evaluate a proposed accessory dwelling unit. No additional standards other than those provided in state ordinances shall be used or imposed. It's Latin, the language of the statute. And the state ordinances do not limit the authority of cities to adopt less restrictive requirements for ADUs, such as allowing for a two-story ADUs or allowing ADUs to replace driveways within the front setback. There was new legislation, SB nine, which I'm sure that you are aware of, that allows two units of at least eight hundred square feet on any residentially zoned parcel, allow for an urban lot split to create two parcels, allow the applicant to build two units of at least eight hundred square feet on each of those two parcels for a total of four units. And applicants must sign an affidavit stating that they will occupy one of the homes, one of the four homes as their principal residence for a minimum of three years from the date of the approval of the lot split, unless the applicant is a community land trust or a housing nonprofit. These lot splits and unit approvals per objective design standards are exempt from CQ. And the SB nine lot splits may result in two new parcels with one being not smaller than forty percent of the size of the original. The maximum allowable minimum lot size, again, the maximum minimum, is twelve hundred square feet. So smaller minimum lot So smaller minimum lot sizes may be allowed by local ordinance. Jurisdictions may allow for three or more, but not less than two units on each newly created lot. And the bottom line of this is that a property owner who's unable to get their desired development approved as an ADU may thus be incentivized to instead pursue approval under SB nine. So I'm going to run through some best practices for ADUs. And one of the things to keep in mind about this this list of suggestions from the research and from other jurisdictions is that the state ADU law is the statutory minimum requirement. And local governments can elect to go beyond the statutory minimum to further the creation of ADUs. And the opportunities to go beyond statutory minimums based on the best practices includes those related to becoming a a pro-housing jurisdiction, to go beyond providing for, to encouraging the construction of new ADUs. And many local governments have embraced the importance of ADUs, the important part of their overall housing policies, including to meet RENA goals, and have pursued innovative strategies. Some, there's four categories of best practices I'm going to run through here. The first is for zoning ordinances. And the first is to allow larger ADUs than the state statutory minimum maximums. So think of allowing a twelve hundred square foot ADU, for instance, rather than an eight square foot, to allow for front or side or and or rear zero setbacks, to allow an ADU right on the property line or less than the the four-foot minimum that the state requires. Perhaps in some zones, that might be an appropriate thing to allow, to to not require ADU style compatibility. So so right now, ADUs have to match the style of the main house. But think of, for instance, a pre-built ADU. That might be a model built by an ADU manufacturer. Well, chances are it's not going to match the style of the main house because it's going to come in its own style. So allowing ADUs to be built that don't match the style of the main house would be one way to allow property owners more discretion in what type of ADU they would like to purchase and place on their lot. On two-street lots or on corner lots, there's a best practice to only require one front setback out of those two frontages for ADUs rather than requiring two front setbacks on those properties. Another one is to allow more than one full ADU per lot rather than, right now, you allow one ADU plus one junior ADU. Another option is to allow something called a carriage home, which is a garage with an ADU above it, to replace driveways within the front setback. I wouldn't recommend allowing them in the front yard because everyone loves their front yard, but for the driveway, it allows you to essentially replace something flat where you can only park a car with a place where you can still park a car, but then someone can live above it as well. So it's a smart use of land, especially when when you're adding a second household to a lot. That's a second set of people who are going to want to let their kids play in the yard, have a barbecue, whatever. And then you're not taking away yard space. You're keeping the yard space for the people to enjoy. And you're just, you're just kind of reconfiguring the the space that's currently used for parking cars. So it's a, it's a smart strategy. Another best practice is to entirely eliminate off-street parking minimums and to instead manage parking demand. Right now, this is almost a moot point because most areas of the city are within a half mile of a transit line. And so therefore, there is no parking requirement. So this would, this would just say, well, don't worry about it. It's, it's, it's not required at all for ADUs anywhere in the city. And then finally, there's movable ADUs. These are called tiny homes on wheels. And they're often the the least expensive and therefore the the lowest barrier entry to add an ADU to a property. And so allowing these would allow households of less means access to the building on ADU. Best practices for process and procedures include an ADU permit assistance program, providing an ADU development process graphic or flow chart, providing easy-to-understand handouts about municipal ADU standards, and providing an amnesty program for unpermitted ADUs. And we're going to get into all of these best practices later in the project. And some of these, including the process graphic and the handout, will actually be deliverables from this project. Best practices for ADU affordability and financial support include ADU financing, fee reductions and waivers, ADU loan forgiveness or financial guidebooks, and requirements and incentives for affordable ADUs. And we're going to be diving deeper into the financial incentive options as a part of task two point ten under this contract. Finally, best practices for ADU outreach and public information include offering free zoning and ADU program workshops, establishing contacts and maintaining a contact list of ADU owners and advocates in and around the city, participating in ADU coalitions, which is the Casita Coalition, and reaching out to media contacts to do firsthand narrative stories featuring ADU owners and residents. I'm going to stop there and open up to questions. If you have any questions for me about what was probably a lot of information I just dumped on you.
You touched on something about the residents having to live there. My question is, a property owner, do they have to live on-site if they build an ADU? And if, and you had said something about three years. Is that's what the timeframe is?
That was SB nine. And so for SB nine, if an applicant wants to take advantage of the provisions of SB nine, including the lot split, then they have to live on one of the four, up to four units that's created as a part of the lot split. But that's just the lot split provision of SB nine. I don't believe that an ADU applicant has to live in either the ADU or the primary home. I believe that in Santa Fe Springs, the applicant can build an ADU and can rent both the primary home and the ADU out for income if they so choose.
Okay, thank you. And you had mentioned ADUs on wheels. So you're talking about trailers.
Well, tiny homes on wheels or trailers, yeah. And so this is, this is one way to lower the barrier entry. So I'm from Portland, Oregon, which in two thousand and nineteen legalized tiny homes on wheels for any parking space that was a legal parking space where a legal utility connection could be made to allow the the tiny home to be plumbed in, wired in, and hooked up to potable water. And it was, it was because there's a housing crisis. City Council declared an emergency and said this is an emergency measure and we're going to allow this to happen. And, you know, we all wanted this rich result and beautiful tiny homes on wheels with craftsmen siding and in, you know, mill miniature eaves. And yes, we did see some of those. And yes, we also saw some trailers move in to driveways and on the street. And quite frankly, those are the good-looking trailers because the ones under the overpasses, burnt out and stuff like that, those are the ones that I'm worried about, actually, not the ones parked in people's driveways. So that's my personal narrative of what that policy could look like is it's less scary to me than what I'm seeing on the side of the road.
So with that being said, what about a motor home?
I, you know, I, I, I think that the challenge is, what if you wanted to say, we only want attractive tiny homes on wheels? We only want like the really good-looking ones. We don't want the the not-so-good-looking ones. The, the reason why I haven't seen any regulations that try to make some kind of qualitative distinction between the good-looking tiny homes on wheels and anything else that that is regulated by the Motor Vehicle Code that that might get parked onto a driveway and hooked up to utility is the difficulty of drawing that line in a quantitative, objective way. Like, how would you actually write a code that's distinguished somehow between the good-looking ones and the not-so-good-looking ones? And so Portland aired on the side of, well, we can't, so we're just going to let anything happen. And that's not the worst thing that we have to deal with right now. But it, you know, what's basically happening is it's allowing for a residence that's regulated by the Motor Vehicle Code to be established on a property as opposed to a residence that's regulated by your local building official.
So what you're saying is that the city can develop or write their own codes allowing what type of vehicles or trailers that they would allow? It's not mandated by the state like some other things that the, each city has the right to write their own codes?
Yeah, the city could write, write your own code to regulate that.
Okay, okay.
And it's just the difficulty of how would you write that code?
Right.
And what would it look like? What aspects of that vehicle would you regulate? Which would be a challenge, but perhaps an interesting one to take on.
Thank you.
What about no house on wheels? Are we allowed to do that? Or it has to be some kind of?
You don't have to allow tiny homes on wheels. Those are not regulated by by the state. It's just, it's just, it's an option. It's for additional ways to to incentivize ADU. I, I think of that as a form of ADU. It's a form of accessory dwelling. It happens to be one that's regulated by the state vehicle code rather than the local building official. But in my mind, it's still an ADU because it's still a tiny home.
Got it.
One of the things was going back on already that they have in existence now, but not to code.
Right, so an existing unpermitted ADU. Now, there is a section in state statute that says that if if someone has an unpermitted ADU currently exists and the city finds out about it and is about to initiate a code enforcement action, that the person with that unpermitted ADU can request a stay of enforcement for, I believe, up to five years. And so the question is, what does that mean? How does that process work? And is there some, you know, is there something that is beneficial to the KND acknowledging that there's a housing crisis that some kind of a pathway for people with existing unpermitted ADUs that it makes sense to establish and what might that look like? And I would propose that something that looks like rental housing inspection, where a housing inspector comes out and takes a look at it and says, well, you know, just like I would look at any other rental unit, I'm looking for, does the faucet leak? Does the roof leak? Is there mold growing on the walls? Is there an obvious threat to life safety? Is the source of heat producing carbon monoxide or is it properly vented or is it electric? Like a list of common sense things that an inspector would look at. That would, that would be what I would recommend. Now, that, of course, requires resources. And there's a question, where do those resources come from? I don't have the answer to that question. But I would suggest that that might be a more enlightened way to respond to what the state is looking for here with this amnesty program in essence that they've, they've laid on all local jurisdictions in California. There's another side to this point, which is that if a unpermitted ADU is legalized or is placed on the pathway to legalization, then the city is allowed to start counting that dwelling unit towards its RENA goals per new HCD guidance. So there's a bit of an incentive here that that's coming from the state around that. So this is one of the the deliverables that we will produce under this contract is to try to make sense of where the city is right now, what to do with this new state guidance and to try to suggest a path forward based on best practices from other jurisdictions that are grappling with the same thing, but are perhaps a little bit farther along the pathway in terms of developing an amnesty program that makes sense. It's actually trying to untangle this thicket of life safety regulations and and true life and safety impacts and the the five-year amnesty and what really matters during that five-year period in terms of protecting life and health and safety of the occupants of that structure.
Where is some property tax coming to this?
So the question being, if you build an ADU, what happens to your property taxes when you?
Even the tiny homes on wheels.
So tiny homes on wheels should not affect your property taxes because it's not a permanent structure. But if you build a new ADU, then you're increasing the amount of taxable structure on your property and that will increase the tax bill for the property. And there is a nuance here, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, about the nuance. If you build a new ADU in the yard, the tax rate for your primary home should be held harmless. But if you remodel your primary home to add an ADU to it, what happens to your primary home's property tax bill? We'll look into the the answer to that question over the course of the project because I think it's a fair question. And we will be developing a frequently asked questions document. I think it's probably fair to add it. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next steps for the project, yes?
Thing real quickly. So in terms of context, many of you, maybe you don't recognize the word ADU, but that was the old granny flat when I first started working for the city. We call those granny flat because the idea back then was your grandparents are getting old. You didn't want to send them to a nursing home or some other place. So you built a unit on their home, on the land, where you could take care of them. Obviously, it's changed tremendously since, but that was the original concept that we all were familiar with.
Thanks, Wayne. There, there's a bunch of different names for accessory dwelling units. I'm not in love, frankly, with the the term ADU or the phrase accessory dwelling unit because I'm not sure that if you were going to go out and talk to your neighbors and say, I'm going to build an accessory dwelling unit, that anyone'd get real enthusiastic about that. I think there's probably a better phrase to use to build enthusiasm and and rapport. But I'm not quite sure what that is. So I'm also open to suggestions through through the course of the project as to other, other things we could, we could call these these second homes on the same property as the first. That is hard to read, but this is the project schedule going out until two thousand and twenty-two of this year. We're still in the, in the first phase of the project and will be producing deliverables beginning very soon here that that can start showing to you. Over the course of the project, we also would like to have a couple of public workshops about ADUs with the public here. Those could be either in-person or digital or both, and we'll work out the details of those with Wayne and Jimmy and and the rest of the staff. But would love to invite you to those when the time comes. And with that, I think that is the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'd like to thank Associate Planner Jimmy Wong and Woodson Associates for your presentation. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten, I would like to call upon Assistant Director Kwan Nugent to please present item number ten. It's a presentation of two thousand and twenty-one planning and development accomplishments. Take three. Or take four.
Evening, Commissioners. Thank you. Glad to be here today in person after several unsuccessful attempts via Zoom. So a, as you know, we are here today to give you about a seven-minute presentation to recap the two thousand and twenty-one accomplishments within the planning department, provides you with a quick update of recently approved projects as well as their status. Also provides you with an update of completed projects and and what they look like today. Also gives you a tally of both planning developments as well as building department accomplishments and also concludes with just notable, notable accomplishments in planning, economic development, and housing. So with that said, we'll give it a shot for the third try. Should run on its own. Third time was certainly a charm. You know, I, I know it was a, a fairly long presentation, but it just shows you how much development activity we currently have and, and still continue to have, uh, in the coming year. So 2021 was a great year, but I, I will sit here and tell you that 2022 will be even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Kwan.
I would like to thank Kwan Nugent for his presentation. Thank you very much. Item number 11 announcements. Are there any commissioners that have any announcements they would like to make?
I have something. I'd first like to thank, um, Wayne Morrell. Um, again, your department is exemplary. And Kwan and, and everything there just showing what we've done and come along in this year and things that are uh, down the pipeline. Um, just great, great work to, to all of you again. And, and the leadership shows, and I just want to think that I did have a question though, that I've been asked by a few residents is when will the groundbreaking be on Chick-fil-A?
At this stage, they're, they're in plan check. But what Jimmy and I have committed to do is every week we check the status. The last time I spoke to the developer, they had anticipated getting their permits by September. And once they get their approval, then S and P has 30 days. So that will determine how long the S and P can can remain there. And construction typically takes six plus months or so. But one of the things that Jimmy and I, Kwan included for projects such as these, rather than it be a surprise, we hope to every week provide updates. When did they submit their plans for plan check? When did they pick him, pick those plans up? When was it approved? So we'll continue to provide updates to you.
Wayne, on that, don't turn your microphone off yet. Um, on the same note, where is Sonic as far as in, in this building? Where are they at as far as uh, groundbreaking?
So Sonic is a little bit more difficult. I know it's been quite a while, but what Sonic did, there is a left hand turn lane that they went to the county and on Florence Avenue, where the Sonic is proposed, part of that area is county and city. So it's a process that it went through, which took a while. But that left hand turn lane, so as you're going east on Florence, there was a left hand turn lane that was approved, but part of that went into the adjacent ARCO station. And allegedly the ARCO owner was shown the plans, walked the site with the developer and agreed to those plans. But apparently because of potential liability issue, insurance issue, that alleged agreement is no longer in place. So we have a meeting, I believe this week where Sonic will come back with a revised plan for that driveway, but it could potentially, they'll have to flip the building. Because and the parking, because it was predicated on cross access. The belief at that time was Sonic could benefit from the patrons of the ARCO gas station and vice versa. But apparently that's not the case anymore. So we have a meeting scheduled this week to look at the options and I will update, update everyone. But yes, it is long time in coming.
Thank you, Wayne. And I just, uh, you know, I know we lost Ken Arnold here a couple of months ago, but it just, it's our first meeting we've had without him and I still miss he, seeing him and hearing his voice. So just had to mention that.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chair.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Congratulations to both of yous.
Thank you. So, um, I would like to thank Mr. Wayne Morrell and the planning department for excellent job you've been doing. And, uh, all the accomplishments last year on, on this video it shows and you guys go far and beyond and I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, but it's just not planning staff. We really have to look at, at Teresa and what she has done for all of us because believe me, she keeps us on the, what do they say? The straight and narrow. But a lot of what we have accomplished, it really wouldn't have been if it wasn't for Teresa. So I would like to acknowledge her also and all of the admin staff.
Yay, Teresa. And she also keeps me. She also keeps me on the straight and narrow and all of us.
Especially me.
Thank you, Teresa. I appreciate it. Uh, any announcements from staff, please?
We have a couple of quick announcements. Uh, first I, I want to, um, uh, let the planning commissioners know that with regards to the general plan, you know, we've moved on and, and have begun our efforts with the targeted zoning code update. Uh, you know, we're currently evaluating the permitted, uh, uses for the mixed use zones. And we'll move into the development standards and non-conforming sections. So uh, those will be coming before you in the coming months. I just wanted to kind of give you that update. Also, there's a couple of flyers that I wanted to share with you on behalf of our community services department. Um, first is just a flyer regarding the, uh, the basketball league. I guess signups are currently available at this point in time. Uh, next is the soccer league. Um, also currently right now they're accepting applications for signup for the summer, uh, 2022. Um, similarly, adult basketball league is also accepting, uh, signups. And lastly, uh, Santa Fe Springs. I'm not sure I can read that. Uh, baseball athletics uh, is also accepting signups for, uh, three leagues that you can choose from. A couple of events. Uh, first is the flamenco, uh, event on Friday, June 3rd at 7:00 PM. Um, hosted by the library. Oh, that's it. Um, and just wanted to let you know that, uh, we do have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. So this meeting will be adjourned to uh, the main 16th meeting. Thank you.
Any other announcements from staff? No? Um, I'm not sure if we do this, but could we have a moment of silence in memory of Ken and then in his honor, please? Okay. I would like to close this meeting in memory of Planning Commissioner Ken Arnold. Also retired planning employee, Robert Soto, senior. And expert plant care owner Kirk Wilson, senior. This meeting is adjourned to May 16th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.